School District Order. Uh, please, no attendance? Okay, uh, please join me in the flag saloon. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first item is our consensus agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Sorry. So moved.
Okay, uh, second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up is our student representative, Olivia Myers and Larissa Kesch.
So, it's School Board Appreciation Month, so we have some gifts for you. My house is big boss.
Oh, no, sorry, they're taking yours back now, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I look at that?
Aye, thank you.
Cool, my kids are not getting this. Not even showing them that.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, you guys.
No, thank you, we appreciate you. So, good evening and happy January. It's School Board Appreciation Month, so we would just like to thank all the school board members for all you do for our school district and our community. It's always a pleasure to come and speak to the school board about what's happening at the high school, because you're also welcoming. Um, we just gave you the gifts, and so SHS has been having a lot of sports, clubs, and activities happening.
First off, we have girls' basketball. The girls' basketball team has an overall score, overall record of 4-1, led by Coach Towold. They have a game tonight against Central, and their next game is Thursday against South Albany.
The boys' basketball team has started out their season strong with an overall record of 5-1, led by Coach Jamie McCarty. They also have a game tonight against Central, and their next game is Thursday against South Albany.
Swimming. The swim team has an overall record of 6-1. They have a huge meet with West Albany, for one of the best teams in the league. On Tuesday, they were working hard in getting ready for the district meet.
The wrestling team has completed five meets, and their next match is January 20th.
The dance team has been doing great. They have been constantly placing well in their competitions and are currently preparing for the state session, season. Now moving on to activities and clubs.
The Los Oligos Club has participated in the Silverton Together Celebrating Families event. They got second place in the Christmas Tree Decorating Competition. The club is looking forward to participating in future events where the students can give back to their communities.
Red Cross Club is conducting their second blood drive of the school year on Wednesday, January 16th. We had 124 students donate in the fall, and they hope to match that number this month. There is a severe blood shortage in the Pacific Northwest mainly due to the holidays and changes donation schedules. The Red Cross Club will also be working with the Sound the Alarm Campaign and will be continuing to install smoke alarms in our area for free.
Skills USA will be competing in the Stank Competition in March at Camp With the Comb on firefighting, criminal justice, crime scene investigation, CPR, and first aid, program showcase, and team metal fabrication.
SHS news. Last Saturday, ASB just wrapped up our winter court and winter semi-formal dance. We will now be moving on to preparing for Mr. SHS. Mr. SHS is a fundraising event that raises money for Medical Teams International. Last year, we raised $37,000. We are hoping to continue to raise money and give aid to those in need around the world.
Today was a short one, so thank you for your time and have a great evening. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, next up is our first public comment period. Public comment period. We are glad you are here and welcome you to address the board at this time with your ideas, opinions, questions, concerns, or comments. Please be certain to sign in before you present. Remember that we all model the way for our students, and we ask that you share your thoughts in a respectful way. The board's role during public comment is to listen. Rarely will you get an immediate response to information. If there is follow-up necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do that. In order to ensure equity among speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. A second public comment will occur later in the agenda specific to discussion and action items of this meeting. Would anybody like to come up and address the board?
So, we're the Richardson family. We have a little one at home asleep with a babysitter, and we have two on the way. We just found out.
Wow.
We will have an extensive history. And, um, we wanted to talk, um, uh, we're here with Lady Piper about playing music back in schools. And so I'm just gonna have the kids quickly present their part, and they are gonna sing. Get easy. Yeah. Ready? I close my eyes and I can see a world that's waiting up for me that I call mine own. Through the dark, through the door, through a no one's been before, but it feels like home. They can say, they can say it all sounds crazy. They can say, they can say I've lost my mind. I don't care, I don't care, so call me crazy. We can live in a world that we design. 'Cause every night I lie in bed, the brightest colors fill my head. A million dreams are keeping me awake. A kingdom wide, the world could be, a vision of the one I see. A million dreams is all it's gonna take. Oh, a million dreams for the world we're gonna make. They're pretty brave, huh?
Good job.
Um, I brought my husband and typed this out because I'm an emotional person to begin with, but pregnant makes it like triplely worse. But I'll be brief. Our, our family came to the meeting today to encourage you to, um, have music back in all of our schools. Uh, I realized that there are a lot of financial, um, ways that, that you need to spread the money, but we wanted to encourage you in this regard. Our children just demonstrated to you the power of music. It can speak and touch people in ways that nothing else can. We wanted to speak on behalf of the children in our community who are in emotional crisis, especially. This is a school board that has already demonstrated a sincere commitment to the emotional well-being of your students, not just their academic well-being. And I'm so deeply grateful for that, because as not only a parent, but as a community member, that makes a huge difference on the present and the future of, of Silverton and of the areas that, uh, that this touches. Please consider that music is a fundamental way to help children process, express, and receive powerful emotions. Emotions that may not be accessed and honored in any other way in their lives. Please give them this help in their growth. It's too late to start it in high school. They have wonderful musical programs there, but I feel like that's just too late for them to have that connection. They need it from the very beginning, and they need, um, they need it from experienced professional teachers, and not just to listen to, to wonderful music, but to, to see it performed live, that experience that you just had here, and also to perform it live themselves. It's transformational for them. Please give the children of our community this help with their emotional education and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks. All right, would anybody else like to address the board? Okay, moving on. Thank you. Um, let's move on to our discussion items. Andy's got a presentation about some new administrative rules.
Uh, no, no presentation.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, but...
Does anybody, does anybody like to, like to talk about?
I will, uh, I will share that, um, that you receive administrative rules in a couple of different ways. You actually received a number of them as you were adopting policy related to some of the administrative rules, but these are some leftover administrative rules that were recently updated based upon your approved policy, and we needed to put some additional time into those. So, most of them are OSBA recommended language, uh, that we've slightly modified in some cases to fit Silver Falls School District. Otherwise, our administrative rules, uh, the three new administrative rules, uh, address our new administrative rules to policy. If you haven't had those in the past, then the revised administrative rules are specific to the revisions that you see. When you approve these policies, many times toward the end of each policy, uh, the board directs the superintendent to, uh, develop administrative rules in order to apply those. So when you give that authorization to me, I either do it myself or in turn ask my administrative staff to support me in that and generally use OSBA recommended language to do that. And so, really, this is an opportunity for you to review them. There's no multiple readings, there's no action required by the board, uh, but they are nonetheless important for the operation of the school district. So if you have any questions or have any input, just let me know.
Thanks, Andy, for that prompt.
You're welcome.
That's good. Does anybody have any, um, uh, I guess item A and, and I, or B, they're both kind of related. Anybody have any questions on those?
I've got a few questions. Regarding the, the OSBA recommended language changes, could you itemize those for us so that we're sort of aware of what you thought was specific?
Which policy are you referring to?
Well, any of them. You said you kind of took their, their, you know, baseline and modified it, but I'm just curious in what ways you felt we were unique, and that would help illuminate perhaps some areas that were worth looking at.
Uh, sure. So, actually, the, um, the layoff and recall of administrative personnel is really specific to OSBA language. We haven't modified that at all. And there's no, uh, collective bargaining agreement for administrators, so we rely exclusively on state statute for that. Regarding Safety Committee, uh, there was some, that's E-B-A-C-A-R. There was some recommended language, uh, that, that it was more bracketed language. If a school district had a district safety committee, where we don't have a district safety committee, rather, Lauren Stanley, our maintenance director, is the safety officer for the district, and he trains each of the safety site-specific safety committees in the district. So there was some language in the safety committee. Again, that's a new AR, but that was not included as an example.
Sure.
Uh, in this. Uh, staff expense reimbursement, that is largely from, uh, the OSBA recommended language, but there was some bracketed language in there specific to, um, it seems, number of years. Uh, reimb, reimbursable expense limitations, that's really up to what the school district thinks is appropriate. In this case, it's breakfast $7, lunch $12, dinner $18. That hasn't been increased for a number of years in our school district. So again, examples, uh, along the way. And then related to intra-district and inter-district language, uh, there is, um, the, I'll use the inter-district transfer as an example. The, uh, uh, you've had this AR for some time, uh, but we did, you'll see it on the strike-through on page 1.2 of J-E-F, or C-F-A-R, uh, you'll see the actual revision. And those two policies, by the way, are revised ARs. So you'll see the changes that are in there. Uh, we were entirely eliminated the open enrollment language simply because open enrollment, we've never used in this school district, and it's going off the hooks. This sprint asked for statutes. Uh, and so, uh, it was part of the law, though the school board always had the potential to utilize open enrollment, uh, law in the past, but we've, this board has always chose to use our inter-district, state inter-district transfer laws for how we, uh, accommodate the transfers in the school district. So, those, those are examples.
Well, that's helpful, actually. I mean, it gave me some insight into why some of the changes were made. As far as the July 1 to April 1 change for the date, was there a particular reason that that change was made?
Can you tell me which policy, which AR you're on?
Inter-district Transfer Procedures, J-E-C-B-B.
Oh, the fourth bullet, got it. Uh, yes, and, and that is, uh, because that's, is referring specific to, uh, when we, um... When, when we as a school district, that's been our practice, when we as a school district begin, uh, processing the applications for inter-district transfers for the next year, that July 1 was not a reasonable date for us. We begin processing those on my go first. For the following year.
Yeah, fair enough. I just wondered if there was something that spurred it, or it was just sort of housecleaning?
No, it's housecleaning. Housekeeping.
Okay, any further questions?
I have one question for you on, um, inter-district transfer, uh, J-E-C-F dash AR. Um, there was a revision, or it was reviewed just in May, and is that when we instructed you to update the AR portion, or what? Did we, it, why was it reviewed or revised? I don't remember looking at this in May.
It was, it was attached to the, uh, the AR, or excuse me, the policy that you approved. It was included with the policy that you approved. But since then, the State Department of Education, the State Legislature, excuse me, uh, has said that the open enrollment legislation is sunsetting at the end of this year, and so we're removing that from, from our policy since it no longer applies.
Oh, I see, okay, so that's, thank you for that. Okay, yeah, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, move on to item C. We have a joint work session with the Silverton City Council, um, next January 8th for our work session. And this, this one's gonna be at the Silverton Middle School Cafeteria. It's gonna start at 6:00 PM on January 28th. Um, the topics, our main topics are mainly have to do with routes, um, and just our, and, uh, safe routes to school, getting kids in traffic around schools. Andy, can you kind of summarize that? I mean, there's, I, I look at the map around, around the high school, and it's just, it's just a lot of confusion.
Yeah.
We all kind of need to try to figure it out, and I think sort it out, or encourage them to sort it out.
Sure.
I don't even know whose responsibility it is to take that.
Right. We'll have, well, you've received a map on, on what that looks like around there, and you're right, it is a little crazy. Uh, the, um, the jurisdiction boundary is a little crazy, uh, and it's a little crazy out, uh, around the high school too, on occasion as well. Uh, but with that said, uh, the joint session, you, you complete about once a year, give or take, uh, with, with the City of Silverton City Council. At the beginning of the meeting, we'll have, I'll, I'll share a brief, uh, presentation or summary of the partnerships that we have with the City of Silverton, just to give you an overview of what those partnerships look like, and I think that'll be helpful to the city council as well. Uh, and then we'll spend some time discussing, uh, progress made with safer routes to schools, uh, and the audits that we completed at our town, our schools within the City of Silverton a few years ago. Uh, Andy will share that. We'll also, uh, speak with you about updates to, uh, the Jefferson Street, Grant Street, Jefferson Street, uh, Western Avenue areas, uh, what that looks like. And I, I'm hoping that that information will just be put out there with the intent of the seven of you having a conversation with the seven city council members, because that's what it's all about. It's just, it's a work session. Uh, there's no public input that evening, it's just an opportunity for you to have a conversation with them. So with that said, Tom, I, I'd like to think there'll be some additional clarification around that jurisdiction, but there surely won't be any action, but there might be some opportunity to create some navigation for the future between the school board and, and the city.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking to try to get some clarity on who's responsible for that. It's affecting our, the operation of our buildings, yet it's not in our jurisdiction. So I don't, anyway, so hopefully we'll get some clarity on that. And we'll get some updates on the Hopeless and Crosswalk information on First and, on, um...
First and Jefferson Street, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, the city had, actually, I, I've been in contact with the city manager over the last week, uh, and, uh, her, the public works director has been in contact with the state coordinator, coordinator on that project, and there is a tentative timeline for that. And, uh, they, it's actually a website, uh, the ODOT website that shows the project, estimated cost, and, um, and estimated timeline. Uh, we can surely share it that night, but I'll actually try to get it to you ahead of time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, I mean, now would be a time to, I guess, get some clarification on those topics, or possibly add additional topics. If anybody has any, any ideas for the meeting.
I think what would be, what I would like to see is if we can get as much information as possible beforehand, before the meeting, um, not the day of the meeting. That way we can, you know, be, uh, well researched in the information, um, when we have our, our meeting with the city.
Well, you, you'll receive a packet a week ahead of time, like you always do.
Oh, okay, great, okay.
Uh, I don't know of anything that's sent to you on the date of, other than what you receive here, but yeah, you'll receive the full package.
Okay.
The Wednesday prior.
Okay.
Uh, when it's released to the public as well.
Yeah, and I, I mean, you're, you, this one including, uh, you're gonna meet with, are you gonna meet with the mayor?
Yeah, Tom and I are going to meet with the mayor and the city council.
Okay, so whatever comes out of that?
The agenda will come out of that.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or input? Okay. Moving on to administrative, administrative staff reports. Andy's got a presentation on Division 22.
Yeah, and this is a presentation, but it's brief. I, I will share with you that, um, the, um, state of Oregon requires school districts review, uh, the Oregon Administrative Rules, Division 22, which are about 56, uh, different rules which really regulate a major portion of the governing of school districts in the state of Oregon. There are lots of administrative rules, there's those around special education, around transportation, around safety, around labor, or just a bunch of things, but Division 22 is the one that we have to publicly report, uh, and share with you, uh, specific to whether we're in compliance or not. Uh, and we have to do that, I have to do that to you, with you by February 1st, excuse me, February 15th every year. Uh, and so we began this process in early December, uh, by tasking, uh, each district level administrator with specific tasks that are specific to their area, whether it be personnel, or instruction, or a few special ed items, business-related financial items. Uh, and that process also included direct contact with, uh, other administrators in the district, uh, who also, uh, oversee some of the Division 22 administrative rules that involve a review of a variety of documents related to this. And my responsibility here this evening is to read a brief summary, uh, that's, uh, a summary of that review. Uh, and so I'll read that to you. "As required by OAR 5810221610, operating policies and procedures, all Oregon school districts must report to their respective community, communities as to the district status with regards to all of the state standards for the Division 22 Oregon Administrative Rules, and by February 1st, 2019, following, uh, our constant prehensive review on reporting to the Silver Falls School District Board and to the public that this school district is in compliance with and implementing all applicable standards for public elementary and secondary schools in the state of Oregon, as set in, uh, in OAR Chapter 581, Division 22." So, Ms. Chairman and all members of the board, we are in compliance with the Division 22 standards for operation of our schools.
Thank you. Okay, any questions? Okay. Okay, moving on, financial report. Steve, oh, um, you know, he'll talk about the financial report and the financial audit report. Oh, he's coming up front.
Well, good evening and happy new year. Do have to press this, and they're gonna learn more. No, okay. Uh, I'm pleased to, uh, present the, uh, audited financial statement for fiscal year 2017-18, uh, tonight. For those in the audience, it is, uh, the full PDF of the, uh, of the report is on the district website, on, on Board Book, as well as the supplementary, uh, uh, material as well. So, um, I want to just, first of all, say what we have, uh, it has been submitted, uh, to ODE as it's due to them within 180 days of the end of the fiscal year, um, as well as the Secretary of State's office. So, so that's been, been completed. Also, just want to say the, the, the most important thing we look for is that we get a, a clean opinion, and we, and we have that. It's called an unmodified opinion, which is what we want to see. And, uh, if, really, we start in the back, uh, page 66, that's kind of where you'll see a, uh, summary of, uh, of their, of the results, their tests, uh, basically stating that, uh, we are in compliance with internal control over financial reporting, as well as over major federal programs. Um, so you like to see those check boxes in the, in the no side there, and also the word unmodified. And that, and that's, you know, pretty much the summary of, of, of all their tests that they do through the audit. Uh, that's, that's exactly what we like to see, is also stated on page 64, as they do an audit for all of our federal programs, and submit that to the, uh, Federal Audit Clearinghouse. So, um, so good news there. No material weaknesses or deficiencies were identified. And before we leave the back of the statement, um, and talk about the rest of it, uh, if you look on page 61, this is always a, a really good, uh, reminder of, uh, and actually it dovetails in with Jen, Jennifer Hannan's presentation after me tonight. Uh, she'll be reviewing all of the grants that we get in our, in our, in our district. Should be covering more than just the federal grants, but this is a summary that's required in our audit called the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. And so it's always a good reminder of, uh, uh, the, the pass-through, the money that comes through ODE from the federal government, uh, including the USDA, National School Lunch Reimbursement Program from USDA, and then all of our title programs, and also our, uh, Special Education Supplemental, uh, Grant Awards, IDEA. So this is a good, a good summary. So, all in all, um, almost $2 million worth that helps, uh, support our, our programs through, most of these are accounted for in Fund 200 Grants and Projects, not the General Fund, so. So that's always a good, a good page to look at, just as a reminder of our federal programs. I wanted to just take you through a quick, quick tour of kind of, just kind of break it down into four or five sections, basically what you see in the back showing our compliance. Then, uh, towards the, the very front, uh, we have a write-up called the Management Discussion and Analysis, or the M-D-N-A. Those are the Roman numeral, uh, pages after page three. This is a write-up that we're required to do, uh, and insert into the statement. Uh, so that's about five or six pages long. It's a good summary of, uh, our activities for the year, and that position, and that type of thing. Then it gets into the government-wide financial statements on pages four and five, and, uh, then the fund financial statements from pages six through 13. And then all the related, uh, notes, uh, and charts, and supplemental materials from pages 14 through 38 are all the notes to the basic financial statements, which is, really takes you through a guided tour of what, what all the numbers mean, and, uh, you know, in great detail, whether it be PERS, or the debt, or fixed assets, or that type of thing. And then, um, pages 41 through 57 is basically their, their individual financial statements for each particular fund. Now they're summarized on other pages, and I'll get back to that, but, um, so I wanted to really go to, uh, uh, to the General Fund and talk a little bit more about that, and, uh, the best place to look at that is pages 41 and 42. The first page, uh, shows the, the detail of all of our revenue for the year, and the, and page 42, uh, shows the expenses. You could see on page 42 that our ending fund balance for the General Fund is $5,660,000. Uh, we were projecting somewhere in that 5.6 to 5.7 range, I believe, yeah, and it, came in right, right around there. You could see that it increased by five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars from the previous year, which is an increase of nine point four percent. That's not a surprise, because of the way O D E distributed funds this, this biennium, based on fifty percent, and fifty percent rather than forty-nine, fifty-one. So, the fact that it increased really isn't true to what we expect for the biennium. So, as we've talked about, we do expect, you know, by the time we're done in June, June thirtieth of nineteen, that, that amount will go down, and go down below where we started this biennium, which is what we planned for when we entered this biennium. But, I mean, if anything, the fifty-fifty, it does allow us to, to turn a little more interest, since they funded one percent more in that first year, so. Then, I did wanna go back to the comments. So, in, in that section, the notes to basic financial statements on page eighteen, there is a comment about two-thirds of the way down about that expenditures in the capital projects fund, Fund Four Thirty, were over expended in the support services area. That was a budgeting mistake on my part. We have one point two million dollars in that fund, so it's not a fund availability issue. It's the fact that, of course, we appropriate by major function level, instruction, support services, capital projects. And when I budget in that fund, it's in the four thousand series, I didn't budget anything in the two thousand series. And so, as we went through the year, there, it's, there's, there's some projects that don't really rise to the, the level of capital projects, so they get coded to the two thousand series and not the four thousand series, and therefore, you know, that, that, without a budget, without a budget line item there, it, it has to be noted. So, I just have to make sure I, I put a budget in both the two thousand and the four thousand series, so. And then the other issue to note is that, as we know, we have a negative fund balance in the lunch, the food services fund, which we knew about, and we have a, a transfer budgeted this year in the general fund to transfer over to the lunch fund to help that. We'll need to do more through supplemental budget, but because I didn't have anything budgeted as a transfer, I had to, I couldn't, I couldn't make that transfer in fiscal year seventeen eighteen. We also ended up with a small negative balance in the print services fund, which is just an internal service fund. We'll have to transfer some money there. And then the grants had a negative balance, but that's just a timing issue, because we have a lot of different grants in there. And as far as, a lot of the grants are, the revenue comes in after we spend the money, so. So there's, there's some timing issues going on there, so that's not a concern. The last thing I wanted to point to, before I entertain any questions specific to the audit, you had two, two pieces of, of, of materials here that were inserted in the back. The first one is a, the more detailed breakdown by fund of, not just by major function, but, but, but each particular function, and also to the object level. And I think this is, it can be dizzying to look at, 'cause the, the numbers are small, but there's a lot of information on here that, that really breaks down each. The, the front page is revenue for all funds, and then every subsequent page is breakdown the expenses by fund, by function and object in every fund. So, this really gets down to the nitty-gritty. It's not something that the auditors attach into the actual report, as it's not required, and they don't necessarily audit down to, to this level, but O D E requires it, and it's submitted to them as well. And this is also on Board Book, so, so this, I feel, is very helpful. And then the last piece is the letter, or communication to the governing body. And this is just a good executive-level summary of their audit process, as well as what they found. And they did make a recommendation on page, is it four? Yeah, best practice recommendation about increasing our fidelity crime coverage, which, it's interesting, 'cause I, I believe this is a, it's been going in most governmental audits, not just school districts. We actually did this last year, so, I, I didn't get to see this letter before the audit was done, but that, we did, we did this well over a year ago and increased it to a million dollars, so it shouldn't have been in here, but I think they had it last year, so.
Like, yeah, it's just kinda the standard, standard language.
It's, it's become, this particular recommendation has become a boilerplate recommendation, so. So anyway, that's just trying to keep it relatively brief, but hit the highlights, and I wanted to at least allow time for, for questions, and certainly, anything that you think of subsequently, I'd be, be happy to answer, via email or at the next meeting as well, so.
Lot of information. Any other questions, Mr. Steve?
Good job on another clean audit, Steve.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome. Good job.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
And just real quickly, the, the, the monthly statement for December, halfway through the year, collected most of our property taxes, a little bit more in February and May. We've collected over half of our state school fund money, because they double, double, double pay in July. So sixty-five percent of our current resources have been received, which is exactly what I'd expect to see at this time of year. And you can see we have our audited ending fund or beginning fund balance plugged in there now, which was slightly below budget. But overall, our resources are right on, right on track, as are expenditures. Really, really nothing there. I, just, just as a reminder, at the bottom there, this is a tally at the bottom of the state's, the state school fund resources that come in, and the items that go into that number all, all have an asterisk, asterisk in front of the, the resource at the top. Property taxes, common school fund, et cetera. So you can see, you can see exactly where we're at compared to our latest O D E estimate, so. Other than that, things are on track, so.
Good, all right. Any questions about the monthly report? Okay.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Jennifer Hannan, two thousand eighteen summary of our grant fundraising.
Yeah, this is a fun one to put together. And I'm not gonna read numbers for you, I'm just gonna point out that we are currently utilizing just over five million dollars in grant funds this school year, and we have another five point four million pending that we have grant applications out for, which I think is remarkable for our district, given that we're kind of off the table for any need-based grants when you, when you're a highly ready school district. It's a great thing, but you don't, you can't demonstrate need to be competitive in a, in a grant situation that are needs-based. So, most of our grants, as you'll see, are for innovative programs, for, for teachers or program plans at our high school and middle school levels, most of them to try things, as well as our food service, or to start up programs, and many of them are state-funded programs. So, those programs, we just have to put together a plan and demonstrate how we use the money, how it qualifies. And then, as Steve said, we can spend the money and then get reimbursed from the state for expenses that qualify after we've done the expenditures and filed all the appropriate summaries and what our data says. Did it, did it, did we do what we said we were going to do, and did it work, and, and those kinds of things? And then we can, in many cases, apply again the next year. So I, there's quite a few, and if you guys have any questions about any of them, I'd be happy to try and answer questions for you. I'm sure between all of us up here, we can hit all of them.
Jennifer, are these just for this year?
Yeah.
Kind of a review?
All of these are new, for, well, these are all the ones we're utilizing this year. Many of them we have utilized in the past, and just the, of dollar amounts have changed. New ones for this year that are brand-new would be the charter school expansion grant. That's four hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred, so almost half a million dollars there. And they are using that to expand their partnership and program with Gearcrest Farms, and then some intensive equity training, which is designated for community route school, but the whole district will participate.
Oh. I think that one also helps with their expansion in the seventh and eighth grade as well, yeah.
The Marion Soil and Water Conservation, that's a new one that we've never gotten before. That funded the, moving those osprey nests that had, you know, set up camp in our field lights. Yeah. I'm looking through, see any ones that we have not received in the past. The Rotary Book Grant is new, and I didn't get a number in time to add it to this report, but Kiwanis also pays about fifty-six hundred dollars for the third-grade swimming program, so we would include them on this. Oktoberfest, we get many years, but for different things. Farm-to-school grant, we have gotten before, but the Clackamas County Waste and Recycling, as well as the D E Q Marion County Waste and Recycling, through that partnership with Sedexo to get the milk dispensing machines. Those are new this year. And the Elizabeth Hope Foundation is new, so they're just starting to send theirs out. And, yeah, looks like all of the rest we have utilized in the past, either last year or in previous years. The amounts changed, and then the designated programs or what projects they go to change year to year. So either a teacher and administrator needs to identify which project will qualify under those grants, and then write it up and make sure the funds get used, and, and Steve gets to do all the fun paperwork to get the reimbursements for them, but, yeah.
That's impressive.
Yeah, so it looks like you're off to a good start for the next school year, too, is that what the?
Those are all pending for this school year still.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that's the Safe Routes to School Infrastructure Grant, that three seventy-five, so we should hear on that soon. And all of these, we would hear back on, I'm not sure when the seismic, when we would hear on that, but these other ones by April of this year.
Okay. And you're for seismic as well.
So, can you clarify the, so there's a Silverton Middle School, one and a half million dollar seismic grant that was at work. There's also a five million dollar one that's pending?
Yes.
Two, two and a half million dollar requests. The current, the one and a half million dollar seismic upgrade is for the gymnasium. We've submitted a request for seismic upgrade to the Schleader Street Classroom Wing. That grant, we've actually submitted in the past, and did not qualify, so we've resubmitted that. We've submitted a new application for seismic upgrade to the James Street Classroom Wing.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be interesting.
Can you, yeah? Can you talk also about the greenhouse programming that's associated with if, if that grant gets awarded?
The seismic grant?
No, it's the greenhouse renovation.
Oh, yeah, so, one of the focuses for Mr. Davison in Silverton Middle School is to have, like, pre-programmes that lead fluidly into the high school C T E programs. So the greenhouse is, was functional, you know, many years ago, when it was the high school, but it's, it's a bit dilapidated now. So if they wanna do a, kind of a running start into that high school program and utilize it like they would like to, it needs quite a bit of work. So they're utilizing, or they're asking for grant money to do that. Currently, our kids do go over to the high school to do some classes there, but they could do a lot more intensive work and really have just their own projects at the middle school, if we could get that greenhouse up and running. It's mostly, I mean, it's, it has enough value to not get rid of it, but it needs some significant work if it's to be utilized to its full potential again. Any others that you have questions about or want me to discuss?
No, those are nice, good, good job, everybody.
Oh, I have one, one other question, yeah. In the pending, January nineteenth, the Gray Family Foundation Equity Training and Curriculum, twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's new, where we've gotten that. Yeah, no, we have not gotten that in the past. So, yeah, fingers crossed on that one. I mean, we're going to receive some of that through the grant that, the O D E Charter School Expansion Grant. We'll get to utilize some of that, but this would be an additional program. We've never, we've applied for many of those through the Gray Foundation that we've never gotten. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you. A lot of work. Okay, next up, Leslie Hope Roach, what happened to the Robert Frost School?
Hello.
Hello.
I did place a variety of thank you cards from Robert Frost students, and their little mittens, and then posters, yes? And, and up on the bulletin board as well. So just a little thank you from the third, fourth, and fifth graders at Robert Frost. Take a few minutes to peruse. I did not read them all before I passed them out, but their teachers did, they told me.
They look good.
Why can't we wear hats in class?
Ken, that's a great question for you.
I was wondering, I've always wondered that.
So I'm here to talk to you about Robert Frost Elementary today, and I just wanna say thank you to the staff that are here in the back row supporting Robert Frost. I just happen to have a few parents who I don't think knew I was presenting, I was like, yeah! So, grades three through five, four hundred and twenty-three students currently enrolled. We do have two kinders and three first graders in our special education programs. And then there's our breakdown of third, fourth, and fifth grade. There's a lovely picture of our float, too, we were a winner this year at homecoming. So we host all three of the district-wide special education programs at Robert Frost. There's our breakdown of students. We have about forty-eight students in our L R C, in our Learning Resource Room, fifty-seven English language learners, eighteen students in, from in-district transfers, and fifteen students from out-of-district transfers this school year. Young Will Matska got a pie me in the face just a few weeks ago. Our attendance rate is right at ninety-five percent this year. Our tell survey results, just a few bullet points I pulled. First of all, we had one hundred percent participation. The staff at Robert Frost is just wonderful, and they are all bought in, and they totally believe in the work that we're doing. So, a few highlights, seventy-six percent of teachers believe that they are encouraged to reflect on their practice. We talk about instruction a lot. A hundred percent of teachers work in professional learning communities to develop and align instructional practices. Eighty-five percent of teachers collaborate to achieve consistency on how student work is assessed. And eighty-five percent teachers know what students learn in each of their classes. So it's not that other people didn't answer those, they just didn't all rate them the same. So those were all the highest marks for all of those. And then, reporting towards our student data, this is our current third grade class, and we have reading on the top. We have taken the STAR assessment twice so far, the window actually opened today, so I don't have January scores to report to you, but you can see there for reading. We have, we're, we started the year at about twenty-four percent of our third graders in urgent intervention, and in October, we were up to twenty percent. I would expect to see that number drop even more this January. We are really working hard to move those students up the scale. And so in October, we were at about fifty-seven percent of third graders at benchmark for reading. And then in math, you can see our numbers are much higher. We have sixty-seven percent of third graders at benchmark in October in math, and just fourteen percent in urgent intervention. When you look at fourth grade, about fifty-two percent of our fourth graders are currently at benchmark in reading, and our lowest group is twelve percent, so seventeen kiddos we're still really working hard with to learn some foundational reading skills. And in math, seventy percent of our fourth grade mathematicians are at benchmark, that's a huge number. a huge number. If you look, that's nine fourth grade students at urgent intervention. I mean, that's a very small number for October. We're working, really, I mean, these are rock star teachers that are just teaching these kiddos to just crazy math. If you go into a math classroom, it's totally different if you haven't been there lately. I would recommend it. And then fifth grade at reading, in October, our fifth graders were fifty-eight percent were at benchmark, and just thirteen percent were at urgent intervention. And in math, sixty-three percent of our fifth graders were at benchmark in math, and just seven percent in urgent intervention. So you can really see the fourth and fifth graders in math are just rocking it, they're growing like crazy, and reading's gonna get there this spring, so. I'll be back in June, you'll get to see the final results in June, like last year.
I have a question.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's it, last line.
So first, kudos for the hundred percent participation, that's awesome, thank you. Your staff?
They're amazing.
Yeah, that's really great, and the data is so much more significant when you get a hundred percent participation, so that's awesome. It sounds like a lot of teamwork is going on in the professional learning communities, and you're seeing the movement that you need to see for students. Are there any ahas that have come out in your school-wide work?
Yeah, we're, our leadership team actually right now is, we're really looking at the minutes in the schedule. This is our, I think our second year at running a ninety-minute reading block with a dedicated thirty-minute intervention time, and we are really, I think, we're rolling around the idea of having thirty minutes dedicated to reading and thirty minutes dedicated to math or intervention or enrichment. We're looking at some comparable schools and how their data, if their data's a little bit higher than ours, what we can do, especially with S-Back. We noticed that our S-Back scores continue to be just a little bit lower than where we'd like them, and so not aligned necessarily with what we're seeing with STAR. So we're really looking at how we can tweak our schedule maybe moving forward.
I think I've asked you this before, but how do you run your interventions? Do classroom teachers plan those and administer them, or do you have assistants helping?
Well, we have a variety. We're lucky enough to have a math specialist and a reading specialist, and so they are available for each grade level during that time, and then we also have assistants who are assisting them, so they're able to tackle the lowest of the kids for both subjects. And then the classroom teachers also are in their classrooms then running extension or intervention for the kids that remain.
And is it one-point-oh FTE for those resource?
The reading specialist is one-point-oh, and the math specialist is about point-eight.
All right, thank you.
Leslie, one quick comment, I spoke to a parent whose children attend your school, and they said they were impressed with two things. Number one, how you maximize every square inch of the building of the facility.
We do.
So hats off and kudos to you. And number two, she just said, you guys just knocking out the ballpark every day, so that was good to hear.
Thank you, that's good to hear.
You want to press it for Leslie? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up for Silverton High School is Wade Lockett.
I mean, I want to echo what was just said about Leslie and Robert Frost as well. My kid goes to Robert Frost, my son does, and he's having an incredible experience. Actually, his teacher is here right now, and he couldn't speak highly on a daily basis, so. Just a few things, right here, you have a quick overview of what we're going over, and there's a report on our CTE programs in here, and there's also a traffic study. You might have already gotten the traffic study.
Gotcha.
But I've included in this package to take a little. And something that I'll be addressing a little bit later on here. So first of all, Happy School Board Appreciation Month. I want to thank all of you for the work that you do for this district. It's, it's not easy. It's not easy work that you get in here on a, you know, weekly, bi-weekly basis to come in and serve this district and serve this community, and I think just by, by virtue of the fact that, that this district is recognized as one of the seven best districts in the state, I think that, that speaks well to the work that you do and how that filters down. So thank you very much for the work that you put in, the time that you put in for these kids and for this district. I want to, I want to start there, the high school kids. Brought you some gifts, and I appreciate the fact that they got an opportunity to do that today, so.
Thank you.
Don't want to take up too much of your time here. To begin with, kind of the nuts and bolts, give you a little bit of a summary of our numbers right now. Currently, Silverton High School is thirteen hundred and eleven students. That is up from about twelve hundred and sixty-seven students this time last year, which is a significant increase. By class, you will see that our ninth and tenth grade classes are quite a bit larger than our eleventh and twelfth grade classes, we're at three forty-four and three forty-seven in ninth and tenth grade, three hundred and four and three sixteen in eleventh and twelfth. Our average class size right now is at about twenty-five, and again, that's up from last year at this time at about twenty. So look at us in larger numbers, but, you know, we're, we're working on addressing those, some of the issues that have been created with those numbers as well. Our attendance at this point right now is right just above ninety-three percent for the year.
Okay.
So very strong. We would still like to be better, but ninety-three percent we're happy, happy with. I have not done a disaggregated analysis of that and what students are at ninety-six percent and what students are at eighty-six percent, but, but that is an analysis that I, that I'm planning on doing here very shortly, figure out how to increase our attendance as well. We welcome several new teachers this show, several, we welcome some new teachers this year due to a variety of reasons. New teachers, Bramon Stoddard, Alyssa Ogil, Christine South, Nicole Salee, Suzanne Kasim, Valerie Brown, and we are about to welcome Jared Wilson. These teachers were from as far east as Buffalo, New York, as far west as Hilo, Hawaii, all places in between. Christine South was from Evansville, Indiana, and then we picked some up from as close as North Marion. So, so, so we feel like we did a pretty thorough search of finding the right teachers to replace the teachers that, that vacated some of those positions. We also added Ed John, who's a retired administrator from West Salem High School in Salem Kaiser School District, and we hired him to kind of be a data coach for us, to take a look at the numbers and kind of dig into the numbers. We allow our, our departments to kind of dictate what data they want to look at, but Ed is there to kind of help us sift through that and figure out what to do with that once we get those, those numbers put together. State Report Card, S-Back, the Smarter Balance, and the Oaks test scores, our three-year average in our ELA department is seventy-nine point five percent, either meeting or exceeding, that's point five percent from being a Level Five over a three-year span. For math, our three-year average, meeting or exceeding is forty-six point two percent. We feel like we've got some work to do there. We actually hired an assistant for our math department to actually work with some of our higher needs areas there, but we feel like we're improving, and the Oregon average over that same three-year period is below forty percent, so we still feel like we're performing well, just feel like we need to improve. The great news about that is that we believe that our math teachers have actually identified, our math department has actually identified very specific students and, and what they need to do to improve, and they're addressing that on a daily basis, so that's a great thing. Our Oaks, I had trouble finding it, but I eventually pulled it up today. But I don't know if I've got it right here in front of me. Our three-year average with Oaks, sixty-six point eight percent meeting or exceeding. A like-school average over the last three years is about sixty-five percent. The Oregon average is almost fifty-eight percent. So again, you know, outperforming the rest of the state in like schools, but, but room for improvement at this point right now. One of the things that we are very proud of, that we reported at the end of last year was, at the end of the two thousand seventeen-eighteen school year, better than ninety-five percent of Silverton High School ninth graders were on track to graduate. The number we gave you at that point was seven, there were seven students that weren't on track to graduate. At the end of the summer, that number had gone down to five. There were five students that were not on track to graduate, and we have very specific information on the five students that, that aren't on track, a variety of reasons. One of those students had transferred to us mid-year with zero credits, that student is making progress. One had some medical issues that kind of limited her, her schedule. She's back on track, getting back on track. So, so we're addressing each of those individually, and I think that's, it's kind of nice to be able to say that you can address those sorts of issues individually when you can get your kids, or, you know, in this particular class at a hundred percent graduation. We are still optimistic that our sophomore class will still be at a hundred percent graduation rate, so to be continued, stay tuned. CTE and the arts, these are two areas that we've had, we feel like we've put a pretty strong focus on over the last couple of years. Our CTE program was focused on recruitment and retention over the last year. Our CTE numbers are up twenty-two percent this year over what they were at last year as far as our numbers enrollment in classes are concerned. We believe that's due to a variety of reasons. We are trying to kind of apply the same measures to our arts, arts programs and arts departments this year that we applied to our CTE program last year to get the same sort of recruitment and retention. So we'll see how that works out, but we are, we're happy with some of the things that are happening right now. And it's fun just to be able to recruit as far as that's concerned, because what that turns into us, you know, for us is a week of the bands being in the halls before Christmas, the winter break, the choirs being in the halls before winter breaks, that's all going on, promoting our, you know, winter band and choir festivals and concerts. So that's, that's been a fun thing to kind of watch happen here. So those are, those are kind of our big folk, folk eye right now. One of the things you will see in that CTE report is, it's a really comprehensive report that Kirsten Barnes put together for our accreditation review. So for those of you that didn't know, we just finished our accreditation review right before the winter break. It was two days of administrators from around the state came in, did a comprehensive analysis of our school and kind of the culture, climate, and what's good, what's bad. We have not gotten the full report back yet, so I'm not a hundred percent in what, certain what those results will look like, but we got some immediate feedback, got some, some good feedback, got some, some things that we need to work on, and I'll have better information for you in, in June is when I come back and report to you again. Two things that I would like to bring up that are getting a special focus right now, and they're number six and seven on kind of the agenda that I put for you there. One is our parking lots, that is there kind of the corner of Grant Street and Grant and Western, and the other is the traffic issue that has been brought up again and again and again. We put our Protective Services class on a mission, had them go out for a week straight and take different kind of data points on where the traffic was worse and where it could be improved, and even make recommendations on what it is we could do to improve the flow of traffic and make things safer, you know, on, on Western and on Grant. They have made recommendations, you will see that in that report right there. Not a hundred percent certain we'll be able to go with all of those recommendations, but I've had other conversations with Mr. Belando and Mrs. Stevens, and we've come up with a few ideas, one of them being the possibility of maybe a crossing guard or a monitor that could, could work, especially during the lunchtime periods where I think things are the most dangerous, not the most traffic, but it's when kids are kind of moving as quickly as possible to get from point A to point B so they can have their lunch and get back to school. The parking lot, I believe, will, will help kind of work with some of the congestion early in the morning and later in the days, and just with students parking over at the middle school. So we believe we're, we're on track to, to make that happen, and hopefully we'll have most of those things completed by next year. I do hope to have a plan for the traffic piece laid out prior to the beginning of second semester. So those are some of our big challenges and what we're working on to address those challenges. They're just kind of basic information, state of the school. Any questions?
I just have a question about this Protective Services work. I think that was a great, authentic learning opportunity. Kudos for putting that out.
You're gonna, you're gonna make me look at this data.
Oh, no, no, I just have a question in general.
Sure.
And maybe it's a question for Debbie. Do we put these on to Board Book after they get presented here, or can we do that?
Could have put it on before if I'd have gotten to you in time.
Yeah, well, that's, that's okay. I think, I think that that's something that our community should, should take a look at, because they did a really, a good job. The other question that I have actually had to do with our student representatives, Olivia and Larissa, their presentation, they talked about Skills USA, and I'd just like to learn a little bit more about that.
So I believe that's the one that takes place at Clackamas. We have a young man who actually won the state title in one of the events last year, and it had to do with, had to do with fire, as a fireman, but I don't recall exactly what event it was, and I do believe he went and competed in nationals as well. I can get you more information on that if it's something that you are, you are interested in, but I believe the competition takes place Clackamas, February, March.
Oh, that's good to know, and, and it sounds like it is a nationwide kind of structure for, for students to compete in CTE-type activities.
Yep.
I just know from another school board member from a different district, another large district in Oregon, mentioned to me one time at, at one of our conferences, like, that's a really great opportunity for kids, and so I was just curious about.
And it's, it's a, it's a nice practical application for a lot of the skills that they're learning in those programs as well, so, yeah. And then competitive, and that always makes it a little more interesting, you know, so.
Cool.
Others?
I have a quick question for you.
Sure.
I saw that there are three new teaching positions posted. That's kind of exciting.
Possible.
Can you, can you expand on that?
That is to address some of those high numbers that we've, that we've already discussed here. You know, we, we can walk through our classrooms, and we can see high numbers in our health classes and our English classes and some of our science classes. So we, we posted three possible positions, or I don't want to say anticipated, but there are three possible positions, and it's, we're looking for somebody that could, might be able to teach a combination of maybe some science and English, or maybe some health and science, or something along those lines, so. So yeah, it's, it is exciting. We are excited to have an opportunity to be able to decrease some of the pressure on some of our teachers that have larger numbers right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, wait, let's listen. On the CTE, I mean, what have you been able to do and expand with the, with the measure? They got the Measure Ninety-eight shirt money, I mean, how, how has it changed from a couple of years ago to now?
How has the Measure Ninety-eight money been able, so what we?
Yeah, yeah.
What we have done with Kirsten Barnes is we've turned her into our department chair for that program, and then she's also reaching out to, you know, different community businesses, what have you, finding work experience for our kids. We've been able to expand into our Protective Services program. We actually have a plan over the next two years to add culinary, there's another one slipping my mind off the top of my head, but I think it's in there, drafting.
Culinary, one, two, three.
Yeah, but there's also.
Culinary arts.
The culinary arts, but there's also the drafting and.
Drafting, one and two, engineering, one and two.
Engineering, that's what, that was the word I was looking for. So those, those programs are expanding with, with those dollars. We were able to create the OX survey courses, which we're also going to be doing something similar with our ARCs courses as well, though that doesn't address your, your Measure Ninety-eight money. But we can do that, give our kids an opportunity to get a smaller sample of those courses over a six-week period as opposed to a eighteen-week or thirty-six-week period. They can do three of those different activities over, over a six-week period during a semester, and if they find a niche, be able to then, you know, walk themselves into that pipeline, which we believe is going to also increase our ARCs numbers, which is something that I was addressing earlier as well, so.
And so that is an elective that students would participate in?
Yeah.
And that's for next year?
OX survey's going on right now, and the ARC survey courses we're hoping to do for next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, for next year.
Good.
And you might not be able to answer this, and that's okay, but are there any, like, CTE programs that you're thinking about down the road based on regional need for? programs that you're thinking about down the road based on regional need for good jobs? Like is there something that we see now?
I think that all of our, all of our programs right now, when you take a look at what the job market looks like and careers that have, well, aging professionals at this point, we believe that students in nearly all of our programs, if they take full advantage of our programs, we believe they can walk out of high school and make a living and a pretty good one. And only be a year or two away from making an outstanding living, you know? Some of that comes from the industry tour that we took earlier in the year, comments that we got from folks working at GK Machines or Stefan Industries and what they're looking for. And they're looking for people that have a good work ethic, that can show up on time. You know, it wasn't an extremely high bar, but we believe we can have our kids extremely well-prepared for those industries. So the average welder in this country right now is sixty-two years old. So that's a program that kids can come right out and they can, they can make a long, strong career right there.
I do need a compliment. Drew, I think it's, does Drew Heinz run the program for kids in tech?
Tech, yes.
So a local computer guy who has a successful business here in town said that the kids that come out of that program are super well-prepared.
They're working for us, right? I mean, they have a class for us where when teachers put in help tickets and whatnot, he's sending kids out to go service our machines, so.
Well, it was good to hear.
Yeah. Thanks.
In the engineering and construction, is there, is there much computer-driven drafting going on? Solid modeling?
Sort of CAD and, yeah, sorts of things.
That's how it's all done now.
Right.
Everything, you can design the machines on the computer and make the machine move.
And then you can take that right into the fabricating.
Yeah, send it to the laser and the fabricators and they cut form.
So the answer is yes. And I know Mr. House does some of that and it's probably right now.
What, you said there was a twenty-two percent increase in participation in CTE. Was that in any particular area? Was it sort of focused or was it?
No, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. I can give you hard numbers and I think those numbers are actually in there, but I couldn't tell you specifically right now, you know, what programs were expanding the most. I think, you know, our diesel program brought in some numbers and yeah, I think OX survey probably brought in, you know, an increase as well, so. But I couldn't tell you specifically where they're at. I wish I could. If you'd like me to research that and get back to you.
I'm curious.
Okay, I'll look at it.
We're excited.
Yeah. Good job. Yeah. I got some athletic questions, but does anybody have any CTE questions? Athletics, something I've noticed, I got a couple athletes in the family, three of them actually. And I mean, one thing that's, I've noticed in especially watching cross-country and swimming.
Sure.
You accept all comforts. Virtually, if you want to run, you might not be on varsity, but you can run against yourself or you can swim against yourself.
Right.
And when I go to the meets, it looks to me like other schools aren't doing that. You know, we show up in two big yellow buses and they show up in one short one. And is that by design, do other districts do that? I like it, I really love it because it gets people, it gets kids out there learning to feel good. It's just, it's good to get kids involved, having a good time.
I appreciate that question because it's going to actually bring me back to something that I wanted to bring up anyway. We believe that keeping kids involved and giving them a connection to their school, to their community, to one another is the healthiest thing for them. In this particular case, we've got a couple of coaches that do a very good job of really nurturing the kid, right? Taking care of the kid and understanding that this isn't about whether you win or lose or what happened, that this is about you improving, being a part of something bigger than yourself, having, you know, having that team cheer you on. I don't know if you, have you been out to a swim meet?
Yeah, it's like full combat. It's like taking.
It's probably more challenging to find a seat.
It is, it is.
We, I joked about it at one point that, in fact, I might have brought it up to you at the South Albany Girls Basketball Game, but I think we have more people that'll pack our pool on the swim meet than South Albany has when they, for basketball games.
Yeah.
And that wasn't an exaggeration. But watching those kids support one another, take care of one another, knowing that they understand it's about improvement, it's about growth, per kid, that crosses over boundaries. They don't, they don't take that mentality just into the pool, they take that into the classroom. You know, they take that into other parts of their lives as well as that it's just, it's a growth process. And I think we've got two coaches that do a very good job in those programs to take care of those kids. On a side note, I did want to bring up, we've got eleven hundred and seventeen participants in our athletics and activities. That includes band and choirs, it does not include, I'm speaking of it because those numbers fluctuate so much, but five hundred and sixty-nine boys, five hundred and forty-eight girls, which is also a pretty good balance right there. I'm sure there's some crossover. I'm sure, you know, there's two sport athletes and, you know, three sport athletes and students that are doing band and, you know, swimming, but eleven hundred and seventeen participants in those activities and then another seven hundred and twenty students involved in our twenty-four clubs that we've got at the school as well. So those are big numbers of students that are finding a connection outside of just the classroom, which those are great connections as well. But you're talking, I mean, you're looking at over eighteen hundred students or eighteen hundred bodies that are being connected to our school and to our community in ways other than just coming to school on a regular basis. And that's pride in your school, that's pride in your community, that's pride in things that you're doing on a daily basis and we think that's a big deal.
And that's very commendable. Hats off to your staff.
They do an amazing job.
Because I know that's by design that they've done, you know, it's been that way. They've been working on that for years and years with, started with AGs and it's by design that to get, try to get every kid involved in something and it's working.
Please tell those three.
Oh, I call you guys.
They're the ones that do it on a daily basis.
Yeah, it's amazing. And you can see it in the kids. We have big kids.
I agree. I agree. So very cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Great choir concert.
It was a great choir concert.
I understand the fire marshal made a suggestion.
Fire marshal made his own suggestions.
Maybe I have two performances next year.
Yeah, we wanted to have it do that.
It's a good problem to have.
I was sitting in the stairway, so.
I had to go up the roof.
You'll take charge.
Thank you.
Anyway, yeah, thanks, Mike. Okay, board reports. Anybody got anything they'd like to share?
I received an article, electronic article from a patron slash employee about students, well, harnessing the power of students who have dyslexia. And it was very interesting and I really, like the CTE discussion kind of just brought it all together for me. The idea of having more interdisciplinary studies and CTE studies where we're creating broad range of skills, which of course we've addressed as well. It just, it was very interesting and I don't think, you know, we need to make necessarily policy decisions based on one subgroup of kids, but I think that there was a lot of vision in the article and I'd like to pass it on to y'all if you didn't get it. Did anyone else, did she send it to you or? I know her personally, so she probably sent it to me on district email, but, and I can share it with staff too. It was just, it was very, it was six-page read. It was pretty interesting and the vision that they painted was just good education in general, so I'll pass that along to you guys.
Thanks, John.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, moving on. Next up is our second public comment period, which is limited to discussion and action items. Anybody like to present? Okay, okay, seeing then, we're moving on and that concludes our public agenda. So now we're going to adjourn to executive session under ORS 192-6602K to consider matters related to school safety or a plan that responds to safety trends toward school, school safety planning, and ORS 192-6602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Thanks for coming. Let's return to regular session. Does anybody have any further business? Okay, great, seeing then, meeting adjourned.